Barely can just see it just now. He said, why are you still shaving? He's like, I'm not. I was like, oh, I'm sorry.
That is awesome.
Good evening and welcome to the November fifteenth meeting of the Stowe Select Board. In the room tonight, we have Ingleboro Kegman Clark, Courtney Freshen, Ellen Sturgis, myself, Megan Birch-McMichael, and remotely tonight, we have Hector Costanzos joining us. Just a reminder, this meeting will be recorded on Zoom and it also will be on Stowe TV. With that, do we have any public comment? And remind all that it is public comment for things that are not going to be on the agenda this evening.
I have a comment.
Sure.
My name is Dan James, eighty-one Barton Road in Stowe. My comments are relative to the proposed dam project coming up. First of all, I'd like to start by thanking Denise.
So you get two minutes.
Right.
Just letting you know.
I'll be quick. I want to thank Denise and the Highway Department and this board for the grant and the successful award of that grant. Hopefully, the first of a series of grants to help underwrite that. And my comment is, I'm requesting that we have a public presentation. There's a lot of questions around the lake. We did have a couple of presentations. We had one for the Butters and then a follow-up conversation with Denise and Bob Collins and myself. But I think it's time to, you know, bring others into this conversation. Last, I'd like to see if we can get a timeline for the approval process. You know, the stages of approval, what the opportunity is for public comment, and a rendering of what it's going to look like when it's done.
Okay. I, we can discuss that and put something together for you. There's nothing that
Yeah, no.
Nothing we could do tonight, but I certainly, I hear you and we, I will take it into advisement.
Yeah, I guess my question, you know, and maybe to get it added as an agenda item for a future meeting.
We can certainly talk about it.
Okay, great.
Did you wanna?
I, we're, we're not finalized with drawings yet. We probably have not had a public meeting. We're still in the designing phase, so.
Right.
Right.
It has been relayed that once we're ready to have a public input, we will certainly have a public meeting, but we are
It's not there yet.
We're not there yet.
Okay.
Yeah, my only, if I could follow up with one comment, but just a timeline of what, what the expectation is for that approval, what the timeline is for when the public will be made aware of what's going to happen, what opportunity the public has to comment and, you know, provide input and recommendations for how maybe to mitigate some of the impact. So, I mean, I would think a timeline should be something that can be put together, even though the plans aren't done.
We don't have that yet either.
No, we're always gonna, yeah.
We're not, we're not at the point that we have a timeline yet. We're still going through that process.
Okay.
So when we have stuff, I will be happy to share it with you. But we just don't. And now, I'm not sure if you're aware, our highway superintendent is leaving, which is going to add some additional complications and it's going to change the project a little bit as well with him departing, so.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else?
No one online.
No? Okay. Any board member comments?
I got a couple.
Yeah, sure.
Just, let's see, that tomorrow, uh, the Mass Select Board Association's holding a, a one-hour session at noon time on affordable housing, in case you hadn't seen that.
Okay.
Okay, I'm signed up for it, but just wanted to make other board members aware. And also just a early heads up, the January MMA Conference is actually in person again this year and I haven't been for years, but it was really helpful the last time I went, which was probably ten years ago, but, um, so I didn't know if anybody else was thinking of going.
Yeah. It'll be the twentieth, January twentieth and twenty-first, I think.
Okay. I'll take a look at that. That might be interesting.
Yeah.
Um. Anyone else? Hector, did you have anything?
Just to acknowledge that November is Native American and Indigenous Peoples' Month. That's it.
Thank you. And I believe that there, the registration is still open for the Stowe gobbler.
Pass the deadline for t-shirts.
Still have, yes, pass the deadline to get a t-shirt. You can still go. I will be dragging my entire family out on Thanksgiving morning, so I hope to see you all there. And
Actually, I do.
Yeah, absolutely.
I just want to acknowledge that we lost a great resident in Stowe the other day, Beverly Benoit.
Oh, yes.
And she was very active with Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, and just Council of Aging, so just make a acknowledgement of her contribution to the town.
Thank you so much, yes. All right, with that, I'm onto the Town Administrator's Report.
Nice. Thank you. As of November tenth, we have thirteen positive cases of COVID in town that are reporting at a five-point-two positivity rate. Just as a reminder, this does not include people that are testing on home tests that are not reporting it, so we have thirteen cases that have been certified by a doctor. I would like to extend a huge thanks to Linda and Deb and all the election workers for a smooth state election last week. It was a very steady stream of in-person voters. I stopped by at about seven o'clock Tuesday night and they had quite a few people there and everything went quite well, so I'd like to thank them for all their work. I want to thank Hector and Reverend Cindy from the First Parish Church of Snow and Acton for organizing the Vigil Against Hate last week. For those of you that was there, I appreciate it. I thank everybody. It was truly a beautiful and powerful evening and we had some nice pictures that we posted on our website and a press release that was issued. I would like to thank the Rotary Club of Nishoba Valley for inviting me to participate in the drive-through Veterans Lunch last Friday. We had a really nice turnout and it was nice to be able to chat and say hello to our veterans while serving them a lunch, so that was really nice. You should have all received notification that our free cash that was certified for July first was certified at one million eight hundred seventy-six thousand four hundred and four dollars. That money is historically used for capital improvements, putting money back into stabilization, funding our OPEB liability, so that is great. It's down a little bit from the prior year. We were just at about two million the year before, but still very healthy free cash numbers. And just to let the board know, I will be out at UMass Amherst Thursday and Friday of this week at the Mass Municipal Managers Conference, so I will be available on phone and email, but I will not be in the office those two days. That's it.
All right, fantastic. All right, so first on our list tonight is a appointment of a new school committee member. And so we have R1 applicant Scott Powell. Thank you so much for being here this evening. And I, I, like, do we want to go through this again because Scott's already told us all about himself? Do you, I'm going to turn it over to any school committee members who maybe want to just ask Scott any questions. Or Hector, if you want to ask any questions of Scott. This is to fill the vacancy that happened when Rich Eckel resigned a few weeks ago. So we have, it's a, it's another sort of shorter term, I think, through May appointment.
Until the election.
Until the election, yeah, and May. Maureen, Karen? Is Leah on? No?
Yep, she's on.
Hi, guys.
Hi.
Oh, I'm sorry. Hi, everybody.
Hey, Leah.
I was coaching, I was coaching basketball, so I just ran out. Very, very, very happy to be here, so.
Yes.
I would defer to Maureen or Karen. Guys, do you have anything you would like to say first?
I don't have any questions. I, I think we're just very grateful that we have a great candidate that is willing to step in and we, we, we got to ask questions last night, so I don't have any questions at this point.
Fantastic.
Great. Maureen?
Um, I, I appreciated Scott's overview and his description of why he feels he'd make a good school commit member back in September. I think he'll be great to join the team and I'm, I'm happy that he's able to join with me through May.
Yeah, I, I would echo that and I would just give, or like to give Scott maybe a minute or two just to introduce himself to anybody, to anyone who hasn't gone through the meeting materials or watched the last meeting, so. Scott, is there anything that you can tell us about why you want to serve the school committee? Or anything about your background that makes you well-suited?
Thanks, Leah. No, I'm just happy to serve the community. I have had experience in New Jersey, serving with what was a school board in New Jersey and hopefully to serve this community well with the school committee in the Nishoba region. Hopefully, you know, my experience and background will help the committee to make this a great, keep this a great school district and, you know, move us forward like we should move forward, so thank you for this honor and privilege and I look forward to serving the community.
Thank you. Select Board members, any questions?
I just was very impressed with your presentation last time, so I have no further questions.
Great.
I'm delighted that you're available to fill the gap for us.
Yes.
Yes.
You didn't give up.
Who knew that we were gonna have a little
I'll be running again today, so, you know, they'll be elected.
That's right. Then you get to
Yes. All right, well, if there's no further comment, I will just take a motion.
Madam Chair, I, uh, let's see, we have following a joint vote of the Select Board and the remaining Stowe Representatives of the Nishoba Regional School Committee, I move that Scott Powell be appointed to fill the vacancy on the Nishoba Regional School Committee effective from now until May twenty twenty-three annual town election.
Second.
All right, any further question?
What does it mean following a joint?
So I think I'm going to take a vote, Leah's gonna call for a vote, a roll call vote, and then
Gotcha.
That's how the motion should stand, I think. So, any other discussion?
I have one more comment.
Yes.
We got a note from a former school committee member, Mark Jones.
Right.
Kind of a correspondence item, but
It's going in the next agenda. It'll be in the next one, because it, he missed the deadline for that one, so we can talk about it in correspondence, but
I understand.
Yeah, yeah.
But I just wanted to say that, that when Mark was on the school board, his, one of his favorite topics was funding the OPEB liability. And so I am not Mark, and so I can't speak to the topic, although on our next agenda, there'll be his letter with some details. And I agree it's important, so I just wanted to say that. And I know this is, so I, I charge you with being curious about that.
All right, so, any further discussion? No? All right, all in favor, Mr. Costanzos?
Aye.
Ms. Hageman?
Aye.
Ms. Freshen?
Aye.
Ms. Sturgis?
Aye.
And chair votes aye, so that is unanimous. And now Leah?
Yep, so Maureen?
Yes.
And Karen?
She's muted.
She's, yes, yes.
Well, I've
I think that the, the host of the meeting has to unmute her.
I flagged it a few times, but if she's not accepting it.
Okay.
Come, there you go.
It's definitely a yes. If your dog's in the room, if I unmute, you might get a super bark.
And I vote yes as well.
All right, fantastic, so that's a unanimous vote. Thank you, Scott, for coming back. We appreciate it and congratulations.
Yay.
All right.
So Megan, just one really quick note.
Yep.
Um, I wonder, do we all think, Scott, you included, do we think that the swearing-in could happen soon or what do we predict there?
Yep, you should be able to contact, or Scott, you can talk to the town clerk's office in the morning. I assume someone can swear you in tomorrow.
Okay. It's a meeting next week, right?
I think so.
Oh, um, our next meeting isn't actually until after the break, but we have an orientation that should occur for a couple of our new members, yourself included, so I'll be reaching out to you using the, um, the contact information that you provided and until Alida gets you set up with school committee email and such. And then we can perhaps do the orientation before you attend your first school committee meeting.
Okay, we'll work it out.
Excellent.
Great.
Thank you all for coming. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, I'm gonna move on to our first appointment of the evening. Denise, did you wanna, is Sean here?
No, but JP is on.
JP, hello JP.
Good evening.
Did you want to tell us a little bit about Sean?
Yes, Sean Duddy is a main ed resident. He is a Amherst student that is working for the Amherst Fire Department while he's on, at school. He goes to school full-time, two days a week. The rest of the time, he is at home. He is firefighter one-two and also an EMT, which is what we are looking for to help fill our credium staff at the fire department. He is very excited to be able to give back to the community and we look forward to his engagement.
Excellent. Any questions? No? Denise, did you want to say anything?
No, I think he'll be a great addition. He has all of the education and training and should be able to step into the department pretty seamlessly.
Okay, fantastic. All right, with that, I will take a motion.
Madam Chair, I move to appoint Sean Duddy as a Call Firefighter EMT for the Stowe Fire Department for a term expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Any further discussion? No? Seeing none? All in favor, Mr. Costanzos?
Aye.
Ms. Hageman?
Aye.
Ms. Freshen?
Aye.
Ms. Sturgis?
Aye.
And chair votes aye, so that's unanimous. Congratulations, Sean.
And JP.
And JP, thank you. All right, so next, we have a number of Randall Building Library Committee and Exterior Design Committee. So we have up first.
Ayesha.
Ayesha? We have Ayesha here, okay. Ayesha, hello, how are you? Nice to meet you. Would you like to give us, tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested?
Sure. My name is Ayesha Anderson, two fifty-one Harvard Road in Stowe. I am new to town, moved here last year, uh, last year with my family. And the library has been such an important part of our transition here and I care so deeply about it. I am a project manager by training. I work in health policy, but I care so much about civic life and building a better library for our town. So just very excited to have the opportunity to put myself forth and potentially serve our community.
That's great. Thank you so much. Do you have any questions for Ayesha?
No, it's a neighbor of mine.
Oh. Denise, did you wanna?
Just that I endorse the recommendation, or I recommend. Endorse my recommendation. And speaking with Ayesha, obviously, her passion comes through for how much she cares about the library. I think she'll be a great addition. It's nice to have some new faces on boards and committees in town. I'm psyched. We have several new people participating, so I think it's great that they want to be involved, especially in such an important project like the library.
Fantastic. All right. No questions?
Where'd you move from?
Uh, I lived in Medford before.
Oh, great.
I'm originally from New York City, though, so it's just a very different
Yeah, absolutely.
The New York City. Pretty awesome library.
All right, and I'll take a motion.
Madam Chair, I move to appoint Ayesha Anderson to the Randall Library Building Committee two-point-O, serve until the project is complete and the renovated library is fully open.
Second.
All right, no further discussion. All in favor, Mr. Costanzos?
Aye.
Ms. Freshen?
Aye.
Aye.
Ms. Sturgis? And chair votes aye. Congratulations, that's unanimous. Thank you. All right, next up, we've got Hannah Sunny Richardson.
Yes, give me one second, please.
Yes. Okay. You don't have to stay for the entire meeting.
I have a friend coming up, so I'll wait for her.
Fantastic, okay. All right, so, Sunny, how are you?
I'm doing well. I apologize for my voice. We've been sick at my house for about three weeks and it's still getting over it. So, I'm sorry about that, but I'm very excited to be a part of the library. I'm actually a volunteer there now. I've been volunteering at Randall Library for a year. It's very important to me because I feel like libraries are one of the only publicly funded places that we have left where everybody can go and be seen and be welcomed and gain knowledge. And I'm just so incredibly excited to be a part of the revitalization of that and, yeah, it would be an honor and a pleasure for me to serve for the library.
Excellent. Any questions? No? And Denise?
Again, it was, although it was, it was comical in our phone call last week, because I barely had a voice and she barely had a voice and we struggled to communicate, but, but once again, her passion came through about this project and about the library and I think it's, again, very exciting to have some new faces and, and people that are really passionate about the library particularly.
Excellent. All right, well, I'll take a motion.
Madam Chair, I move to appoint Hannah Sunny Richardson to the Randall Library Building Committee two-point-O to serve until the project is complete and the renovated library is fully open.
Second.
Any further discussion? No, seeing none. Mr. Cost, or, all in favor, Mr. Costanzos?
Aye.
Ms. Hageman?
Aye.
Ms. Freshen?
Aye.
Ms. Sturgis, aye. Chair votes aye, that is unanimous. Congratulations, Sunny. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Sunny.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, Mr. Fishman.
Aye.
Hello. Would you like to introduce yourself?
Yeah, my name's Richard Fishman. I live on Taylor Road. I actually live next to Ellen's brother. I've been, I've, I've lived in Stowe about two years, but I haven't been very connected to this town yet. And I saw a notice that you were looking for somebody to serve on the Exterior Design Committee. So my background is in graphic design. I studied architecture. I've overseen a couple of construction projects. And my life has always been about aesthetics and reading. And I've loved libraries since I was three. But, you know, my aesthetics is what I can contribute here. I'm a painter now. I also teach part-time, teach kids to drive a car. So anyway, I was just looking for ways to employ you here and it seemed like the best I could offer at the moment.
That's fantastic, yeah. Do you all have questions?
No.
No?
Sounds exciting.
This is great and like, I liked your experience. It seems like it's a good, this is a good fit for this committee.
You said you now paint. What did you do before?
No, oh, I've been painting since I was a kid, but I, I retired from my graphic design career.
Got it.
And now I paint more. I'm actually having another show coming up in December in Ashburn here.
Oh, wonderful. That's excellent. Denise?
I think he'll be a great addition to the Exterior Building Committee. When we spoke, we talked about sort of merging the new with the old and getting a design that the community embraces versus the glass structure that was put forward, so I think he'll be an asset to the Exterior Committee.
Fantastic. That's great. All right, I'm ready for a motion.
Madam Chair, I move to appoint Richard Fishman to the Randall Library Building Exterior Design Committee to serve until the exterior design of the building has been approved by the Randall Library Building Committee two-point-O.
Second.
Any further discussion? No. Seeing none, all in favor, Mr. Costanzos?
Aye.
Ms. Hageman? Ms. Freshen? Ms. Sturgis? And chair votes aye. So that is another unanimous vote. Congratulations.
So how do I find out when it meets?
So you will all get appointment letters tomorrow, actually, probably not tomorrow, maybe early next week that you will go and get sworn in and then once we start scheduling meetings, we'll be in contact with meetings.
Okay.
I, I wouldn't expect perhaps one before the holidays, but we really won't get started until after the first of the year.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you all so much. I appreciate it. It's so nice to see new faces.
I know, it's very exciting.
Exciting.
Denise, it's a fun place to volunteer.
Yeah, for sure. All right, we have Allison Lampkin, who is, Allison on?
I don't know if, if, I don't see anyone under Allison. If Allison's on.
She was in the waiting room.
There's no one in the waiting room.
Yeah.
I think Josh
Is Josh?
Turned on their camera and
Yes. I sent an unmute, there we go.
There we go. Hello, Allison, how are you? All right, so we have Allison Lampkin here for the Recreation Commission. And Allison, do you want to tell us briefly why you want to be on the Rec Commission?
Sure. I moved to Stowe a little over a year ago. I have two young kids, so I'm definitely interested in learning about the different opportunities that are available for young families in Stowe, but then also to grow the commission in general. I have a history in events. That's what I do professionally, so I've been working in the events world for twelve years, so it's just a really good fit.
That's excellent. Denise, did you have anything?
Just that I think, and I think she'll be a great addition. When we spoke, we talked about her event planning and some ideas she has about more community-focused events, not strictly youth sports, so trying to find a way to bring more community organizations together or whether it's sort of, we talked about maybe gingerbread contests or just adding on to Spring Fest and things like that, so I think it'd be great.
That's great. Well, thank you for stepping forward. We appreciate it. And does anyone have any questions? Just always going to turn to you first, your work.
I don't know, but no, I thought that, that your experience sounds just perfect for the commission, so thank you very much.
I think it's great jumping in.
Yeah, of course, I'm looking forward to it.
All right.
Madam Chair, I move to appoint Allison Lampkin to the Recreation Commission to serve the remainder of a one-year term expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, Mr. Costanzos?
Aye.
Ms. Hageman?
Aye.
Ms. Freshen?
Aye.
Ms. Sturgis?
Aye.
And chair votes aye, that is unanimous. Congratulations and thank you, Allison. Thank you.
All right.
Hi.
Wow, you're a lot.
I'm going to get to the point where I forget all of your names.
I know.
Be my big cheer.
Okay. If I look at you blankly, you can say I'm in. All right, next, we have the event permit for the holiday tree lighting, which is Saturday, December third, twenty twenty-two, from five PM to seven PM, sponsored by the Lions Club. Do we have a representative from the Lions Club on?
We do, we have Linda.
Oh, hello.
Hi.
How are you? All right, Linda.
How are you?
You're fantastic. Would you like to tell us briefly about what you have planned for?
Sure. Sure, we do plan on bringing back the event this year. In the past, we've had Santa arrive on a fire truck and we are working to coordinate that. Through the Town Administrator, we have also coordinated the Dunkin' Donuts truck to come. I think Dunkin' Donuts is feeling badly for our town at this point and they would like to help bring some cheer to our holiday tree lighting festivities. And I believe there will be some kind of hot coffee beverage, hot chocolate, and probably some munchkins that will be free to anyone who is there for the lighting event. So what normally happens is we close down Gardo Road and, you know, it's all in the, at the end of the Stowe Plaza where, where the large tree is, kind of right near where the Stowe Lions are selling the trees. And so we did have a request from Lenny Goldar that came in last week to try to incorporate a menorah into our tree lighting, so we are also trying to see if there is one available that we could use or have for the event. So that's something new that's in the works that we had not discussed previously, but we thought that would be wonderful to try to incorporate. And so I think, you know, also the Boy Scouts, or the Scouts now, pardon me, will be there also with roasting marshmallows in a fire pit like they've been in the past. One last detail I'm still trying to find is the sound system, but I still think, you know, it will be a wonderful event if we don't have the sound blaring, if people are just singing holiday songs and just enjoying getting together as a town again and celebrating the winter. and just enjoying get- getting together as a town again and um, celebrating the winter season coming on. And I spoke to um, we had a nice meeting with the fire department and the police department and everything. So I think we're all on board and all of the plans are ironed out for it to be a great night.
Uh, I'm excited. I think this will be, it's, it's always been a lot of fun. So um, thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
Our, our packet had some information about the possibility that the electrical lighting might not be ready for that night. Is that still in a, a potential?
It is. So that's actually through us. Um, so we, the highway department put in the request in August to make sure the lights were up on this building and the tree. Um, and we have not heard confirmation. Uh, I was informed that there are still some lights on the tree from last year, so we may have a partial lighting. I don't know. We are hopeful that they will be in and up in time. But if not, we did talk about in our meeting that worst-case scenario, we just have sort of a holiday festival that night and make the best of it.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah. Weather permitting.
Yes.
At this point, we did not schedule a rain date at all. So it's, it's either going to be on the third or unfortunately, not at all because every other weekend was pretty booked up. So um, we really are hoping for great weather and we're hoping for a great crowd and to have another, just a, a nice event to bring the town together.
Thank you.
Yes. I, I mean, I, I'm, I was gonna ask the same question that Lenny did, so I appreciate that he, he spoke up. I think um, particularly given the recent events, it's really important that it's been sort of one of those things that sort of bugs me that we get a little too Christian-focused on the holiday traditions. So it would be lovely to.
And I hope we can find something. I know someone was mentioning other
Well, Maynard.
may have something we could borrow for the evening or, or whatnot, but we are looking into it. So we do hope that we can incorporate that for sure. We find it important as well.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And if anyone that's listening knows of anything, please contact Stowe Lions.
Or some
That's a project.
It's a project to do over the Thanksgiving weekend.
Absolutely.
Maynard has one, but they have it out for the seven nights. I mean, they light it up.
I think it's made of PVC.
Probably.
Two, yeah.
They're substantial.
It's unfortunate. We don't know anybody who knows woodworking. Alright, well.
This chair is awfully.
Uh, I will take a motion.
Madam Chair, I move to grant a permit to the Stowe Lions Club for a holiday tree lighting on Saturday, December third, twenty twenty-two, from five to seven P M. on the town's lower common. Pending approval from the town administrator, that all necessary documents have been received.
Second.
Alright. Anything else? Any further discussion? Uh, all in favor, Mr. Costanzos?
Aye.
Ms. Hegeman?
Aye.
Ms. Froschah?
Aye.
Ms. Sturgis? And Chair votes aye. So that's unanimous. We look forward to seeing you
Good fun.
December third. Thank you so much.
Thank you, everyone.
Have a good evening. Have a good evening. Alright, so next on our agenda is the updated traffic mitigation plan with Chief Salisi.
Hello.
If you'd like to.
The bearded.
The bearded Chief Salisi.
Chief, chief, why do you have a beard?
No pink shirt today. We switched months, so now it's all about veterans this month. Supporting the veterans. So we, we switch it up. So now, thank you again for having me back for the continuation of this never-ending story of the traffic mitigation plan. So first, I just want to say that I went through uh, the document and I heard what you were talking about before, Ms. Sturgis, about the uh, confusing language. So I was able to make that change. And now it says Whitman Street, uh, no parking from Sudbury to Burch. So those, that has been updated. So there's no longer any confusion with that. So part of the problem, or product, not problem, but part of the um, the plan that was in place before was things were always in development and they were never finalized. And then we thought that was important to revisit that and continue on. So we, the last time I was here, it was all about the apple orchards in town. And what can we do to make sure that traffic uh, was constantly flowing around uh, the community? Now it's all about Christmas trees. So now we have a couple of Christmas tree uh, shops in town. Not only are they selling um, uh, from pre-cut trees, but you can cut your own trees. There's a few farms in town. So we worked with those commu- uh, those farms and we spoke to them and we said, hey, listen, this is the plan that we have in place. If we, if certain things happen, this is what we're, we're gonna do. These are the expectations you can uh, get from us. And this is the expectation we can get from you. We had, uh, we brought the stakeholders into our Traffic Safety Advisory Committee meeting to make sure that they had a voice. And then we ended up uh, finalizing the plan, which was presented in front of you. The mistletoe farm is gonna be our biggest um, traffic concern uh, right off the bat. Uh, there's a lot of advertisement that goes along with them and they've uh, and they recognize that. And you'll see detail officers down in that location. Uh, the other in places, Honey Pot uh, has cut uh, pre-cut trees. So uh, they're pretty good about getting traffic. They're, they're pretty, they're pretty good about getting traffic in and out uh, wi- without any assistance. Uh, tap route, uh, we have a plan in place, uh, even a, a queuing location. So if they start getting out of um, out of the farm area, that we can queue them up into a separate uh, area. And then, uh, and if it gets to the point, we're gonna, we can make uh, roads one way and another. So we, we put plans in place uh, to help uh, keep traffic flowing and make sure emergency vehicles uh, can get through. Cause that's what our real, uh, you know, concern is. Um, is public safety, is being able to get fire trucks, ambulances, police cars, down to any emergency, any, any resident or guest that needs us in those locations. So that's what we're at. Um, there is an updated part of Carver Hill that was never completed. Carver doesn't get like, the overflowing um, traffic that the other orchards get. But we felt it was important that, hey, listen, if you're getting tr- traffic backed up on a sixty-two or up over the cemetery, that at least our officers know uh, what the plan is and what you can expect from us. And it's not a shock. So that's, it's all about communication and having that plan in place. So uh, right now, we are, I think we're good. Thank you.
We may add, we may add Nans in. We, we spoke with Nans yesterday. So they may be the next phase of the traffic.
But this is um, uh, an ever, like I was saying, an ever-evolving document. So when new businesses come into town, we want to see them succeed. We want to work with them. We want to see the community uh, come together and help all these uh, businesses out. Especially we're a farming community and a, and a right-to-farm community. So we want to see that continue. And um, we will, what we, we may have to add Nans and uh, that's uh, what we have to do. And again, it's all about having that talk before it happens. And if we can have that in place, then we're gonna be better off when something does happen. So this is just uh, I'm not saying it's a final draft because I'm gonna be in front of you guys again. I know that. But uh, we'll uh, this is good for now, right now. Right now.
This is great.
So, any questions on anything?
I can pick a typo up.
You found a typo?
Page twelve, you refer to it as Shelburn Farms, which is in Vermont. Has, is only one farm.
I'll ta- I'll take care of that. That's not the first time that mistake has happened.
And they call from all of them. But no, I think it's great. But I mean, you know, back in the day, you know, it used to be details at Stowe Gardens too, when it was, get crazy around the holidays. So I mean, I appreciate that they'll always, hopefully we'll have other new businesses coming in with new volume.
Right. And you know, I, I like seeing the, the amount of people coming in to visit our communities is really great. It's really great for Stowe. So I think it's uh, um, I'm happy to put all these plans and work, like, work as a group with all our, you know, our traffic board has all the different um, departments on it, which is really great. So we can all get together. And it's not just like, oh, the police wants this and fire wants this. It's like, no, it's like, what does the whole uh, most of the departments want and need? And like, it's a real big community voice, which is great.
That's excellent.
Yeah.
Ready?
Yes.
I have a question. So is the Nans, this potential discussion associated with the evening traffic, traffic just year-round? Or is it a seasonal thing?
Well, so there's a few issues with Nans uh, that we're trying to work with. One is gonna be uh, what is the high point? Like, what is the high flow at times? So right now, I mean, they are like the number one on Yelp. They're like, what to do around Stowe and go and apple picking. Like, they have that uh, free social media advertisement from everybody, giving them great, great reviews. So we're finding that on the busy time in the, on the weekends for the same time period of, that our plans in place for the apple picking, that they, they had um, an increased volume of traffic in that location. So that's one thing we have to work on. Um, we did talk to them and they are about like, filling details. But the also is, what's the plan? How can we keep the customers happy as well too? Um, it's very easy for me to put a car across the road and just shut it down. And that's not what we want to do. Uh, we were talking to the owner about, you know, um, trying to encourage people just to come during their pickup time, maybe for, cause there's pre, uh, there's online ordering. The, it, there's um, people come in, if people go to pick up their food and they stay or they walk around the store and they spending, not like five minutes, and they're spending thirty-five, forty minutes, an hour at that, at that location. So the turnaround is not as great as that we want it to be. Um, you know, that we'd like it to see. Cause then all the spaces get used up. There's twenty-five spaces and once they're used up. But he is now parking, he has an agreement with the church. So all his staff now park at the church. Uh, for the winter time, he's gonna turn around and he's gonna shuttle them back and forth. So that frees up six to eight spaces, which is great. I think at the nighttime, the separate issue is the lighting over there. I know there's planning board decisions that have to be made and, and things that go along with that. But he's gonna, some of the lighting has been knocked down due to sto- snow. So he's working on replacing that. That's for public safety. It needs to be a better lit. You know, if I, I look at people walking across. Anytime you have moving cars and, and people walking, it's, it's a safety concern for myself. So we're looking at that. What can we do better for, for them on, on that end? So it's not gonna be, it, it may be seasonal, but it may be more than that. And, and he's willing to work with us. Um, and he's really listening to our concerns and everything. So uh, it's a, it's a good dialogue. We met with him this week with the building department, the planning department, and myself and uh, the town administrator. Uh, we had a good, good meeting with uh, Jordan, so.
Any other questions? No? No? Alright, I'll take a motion.
Madam Chair, I move to accept the updated current version of the traffic safety, uh, the plan for traffic mitigation as presented at this meeting by Police Chief Michael Salisi, uh, with no amendments.
Second.
Can I just say one amendment? Just say one amendment. I gotta get rid of the S on the show.
As amended.
Um, alright, any further discussion? All in favor? Hector, aye. Great.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. That is unanimous. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Appreciate it. And uh, you know, feel free to come in next week and let us see how the rest of the year is coming in. Appreciate it.
That's cool. Alright, thank you.
Thank you so much. Have a good night. Alright, um, so next on our agenda, um, I received an email from a resident, um, Martin Brower. Leaving you here?
I, I go over here.
This is for a school assignment.
Civics lesson for the year.
Um, alright, so I, as I was saying, I received an email um, from a, a Stowe resident, uh, Martin Brower. And I wanted to put it in our correspondence so that we could continue, or not continue, so that we could have a discussion about the recent um, anti-Semitic act that happened in town, um, and what our response was um, as a board. And then um, I wanted to talk uh, with the board about um, what next steps would be um, with regard to what Mr. Brower had asked for. Um, in this email, I was hoping that um, what I'd like to propose is bringing him in um, to discuss what he has um, brought forth to the Sudbury Select Board and maybe asking him what language he would want to bring forward to our board for us to uh, talk about. So that is why this is on the agenda. And so anyone has
This is a discussion you want me to have?
I don't think you need to. It's a continuing police investigation. There's nothing, anything right, I'm, I'm correct. So there's nothing that you can talk about. Thank you so much. Um, alright, so I'm just opening the floor up to anyone who wants to say anything.
Well, I, I felt bad I wasn't in town for the, I mean, I was really proud of Stowe for the response that you guys wrote and that how many people showed up to the vigil. I got emails from, from friends that live here that were um, heartened to see the response. So that was really good. Um, I, you know, I think, um, I, I, I mean, I'm, I'm really curious to see or totally open to this wording. It would be interesting to see what, what it says and how that can help us move this forward. I mean, I do say things like, like the holiday celebrations, you know, it's an opportunity for us to realize, you know, we aren't all, you know, Christian-based. And um, so I think um, you know, there's a lot of things we can do to, to move the conversation. You know, make it a positive.
Yeah, absolutely.
And thank you, Hector, and, and um, the minister at Unitarian Church for, for pulling that together. It was great. I thought it was particularly powerful that it was on election night somehow. It just seemed like, you know, what better time to like, underscore that, you know, there's no hate here. Or there should be no hate here.
Yes.
Yeah, it was an honor to be able to do it, even though it was something that we wish we didn't have to do.
Yeah.
And I do want to thank Denise as well for um, really, as soon as it happened, it was sort of, the gears went in motion real quick. Um, and so bringing it to my attention. And making sure the press release went out and all of that. Um, it, it's it's heartening to know that this is the community that we're in, that kind of rallies behind. So thank you very much for that. How do we feel about what I've proposed? For having him come in?
Absolutely.
I agree. If he could also send us some language ahead of time, so we can have a more
No, absolutely. I think what I'm going to ask Denise to do is to reach out to him um, and basically ask the question, what did you do when you brought it to the Sudbury Board? What, what were you proposing? And then hopefully he'll get back to us and that can be in a, a packet in the future, just to understand more. Cause the email as it is, is kind of a
Right.
There's nothing
Right.
to it. And so I want to understand, not that there's nothing to it. There's just, there's not a concrete action step that we can take. And so I'd like there to be a concrete action step that we can discuss as a board, so.
Right. I don't want it to just be some words that gets
No, not at all. Nope, I agree with you. Yep.
It's not, it can't be just feel-good. It's gotta be
No, absolutely, absolutely. And I think um, especially because this is something that he has worked with another board in Massachusetts on, it seems like it's something that's completely feasible, so.
Well, and I think if we think of it sort of as the way when we were adopting resolutions generally,
Right.
it was tied to actions like, you know, maybe talk to the library or talk to other boards. Like, what can we do to
Yeah.
It doesn't have to be a special month, you know, it can
Right. Well, and it's like, we don't have a temple in
Right.
Stowe per se, but we certainly have members of our community that attend temple in other communities. And so is that, you know, can we talk to them or can we, you know, talk to other faith leaders or however? Because I agree with you that the tree lighting is is, is more Christian-based. Um, and I've always wondered why we haven't had a menorah and have thought about, you know, how, it, it, it's unfortunate that this is sort of the tipping point for us to really sort of think more about this, but um, but I'm heartened that we, that these conversations are happening. So.
Can I just add?
Yeah.
Um, it was really nice to see that um, we had multiple congregations represented as well last Tuesday evening. Um, I think we had, we had um, Bethel and Sudbury. We had a congregation in Acton. We had the rabbis from both. So it was just really nice that they were able to come together as well.
Yeah.
Um, and Hector has raised his hand.
Yes, Hector.
I'm, no, I'm glad that we're doing all this forward-thinking and uh, looking forward to see what is proposed for the wording. I also think we should do it from the perspective of a broader mindset as well. Because we do have, you know, it's great that we came out with such a powerful response to support our Jewish community. But we also have indigenous people, uh, black people, Hispanic people, or excuse me, Latin American people, and a variety of other diversity that live in our town. And I would hope that whatever we put forward, it says that we won't stand for hate, period. No matter who's directed it.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, I agree.
Yep, yep. I do think um, that's I, that's why I'm interested to, to hear sort of what, what language he comes with. It doesn't mean that
Yep.
that we just adopt that. That we just adopt that, but it's possible that it's something that we use as a as a stepping off point. Um, so, so yeah, okay.
So it's, I just wanna comment on that, I think perhaps specifically be, I mean, well, I guess there are a lot of groups that have been persecuted over time. Um, I think it's, maybe there's a way of recognizing that without, you know, I mean, I don't think, am I trying to say? Recognizing one group that's been persecuted does not need to, um, say that we're not recognizing others. And maybe there's a way to singly recognize a particular concern and then also make a more general or broad-reaching statement. And again, not just hoping, you know, maybe, I don't know how to word those things, but I look forward to somebody that does.
No, I hear, I I hear you, and and so hopefully this invitation will yield us some some language from him and then sort of see where we can go from there, but it sounds like we're all on the same or similar pages, so.
Can I, so I think, I think his is more focused around the definition of antisemitism, that's really what his, do you want me to try and get some broader statements from other communities?
So I think there are other communities who have been doing this work, and so I would like to see other commu- personally would like to see other communities that have been doing this work, cause I know it's something we've sort of danced around, and I I think, um, I think it it would just be interesting to have that information.
Okay.
Um.
If I may, Sudbury actually adopted what's the International Holocaust Remembrance Alliance Working Definition, and so they took it from another organization. So it's not like they came up with it on personal, but.
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, that's Sudbury?
That's in Sudbury, yeah, it's on their website, I can send you the link.
Oh, perfect.
But I mean, I I do, I have to say that it's also, um, and especially around this election, the rise of antisemitism is getting pretty intense, and some of the stuff that candidates thought it was totally okay to say, particularly around the Jewish population and who was in control, it was pretty scary that. So I I think it's a, you know, it's an opportunity for our community to talk about, you know, some of the, you know, the rise of hate has sort of been everywhere in the last few years, but I think, um, you know, yeah, I just, I think it's, there is, um, specifically against the Jewish community right now is getting really scary.
Yes.
But.
Alright, um, well, thank you all for indulging in that conversation. Um, alright, next up, we've got charter changes. Um, we've got proposed changes that we went over the last meeting. Um, and we, so Hector, we sort of took your changes, we talked about kind of looking for big picture ones, that that's the ones that the board, um, certainly as a private citizen, we all discussed that we're all more than welcome to submit our own charter changes, um, but we wanted to kind of have a handful that the whole board was willing to sort of, you know, stick their neck out on, so. This, I think, is Denise, correct me if I'm wrong, but this is kind of the compilation of what we talked about?
Yes, so you talked about a few others, um, but this, these were the ones that you wanted to highlight, so. I do have the list from last meeting, if there's, if you had questions on any other ones that were discussed, but this is what I was able to narrow it down to based on that discussion.
Okay. Alright, and now my agenda packet's not opening.
Your what?
My packet's not opening, it's just like crushed. Alright, so the first one, nope, there it is. With a whole bunch of smaller sections.
Well, yeah, the first one, just changing all the references to select.
Oh, right, okay, that is the first one, okay.
And then master plan.
And then master plan to comprehensive plan, um, which I think is a solid move. Sorry, I'm in the traffic mitigation plan, I'm just gonna keep scrolling and scrolling and scrolling and scrolling forever.
It's page 29.
There we go. Alright, um, so selectmen and select board, master plan, comprehensive plan. Alright, so we were talking about the, Ellen, is this the one you brought up, Article Two? The increase to thirty votes for?
I think so, I mean, I was more concerned, it seemed like a low bar, and um, so thirty seems like a good number.
Okay. And then two hundred voters by petition is what it currently is?
Um, yes, yes.
Okay.
Right.
Um.
And that one, I mean, I'm not, that's uh, that's the weird one where it it, you can start the recall with a petition of two hundred voters, that only starts the petition and then you have to do, right, is that that one?
I see.
No, that's for ballot questions for special town.
That was, sorry, I'm getting them mixed up.
Two hundred voters.
Right. So I I don't know if that's too high, you know, but then if if one lives in California, you'd say, it's, you know.
Right.
But, I mean, I don't, we've so rarely had anybody, um, you know, petition for a ballot question, and they're usually non-binding and, but, um, I, what, in my mind, there should be some formula, but I don't know what the formula is, you know, I mean.
Yeah.
You know. Well, we have, what, how many people in Stowe now? Sixty, six thousand?
No, seventy-one, seventy-two hundred.
So if you, someone can do the math, it's that percentage, it's not very much. Well, that's, that, I mean, voter census, but.
What if we just, I I think the discussion that we had had was putting in a percentage instead of having a se- a set number of voters, so it was, if it was like two percent of registered voters or whatever the number is we pick, then it feels like then.
Yes, so how many registered voters do we have?
Well, no, but I mean, it's, I think the idea is that if you.
It could be a five, five.
Five, yeah.
Kids and stuff.
So I think the idea is that if you tie it to a percentage, A, you're not having to come back to this pretend- particular thing in the charter years later, when you have a population of twenty-five thousand or whatever, you know what I mean, like, but, um, I know everyone's head just exploded, um, I can have twenty-five thousand people in Stowe. Um, but I think, I think if we have a percentage, then I don't know.
Yes or no, are you, I'm not getting.
No, no, I think we should have a percentage instead of a set number.
If we have five thousand registered voters, then this is four percent.
Okay. So maybe we say.
So, and it's funny, um, I was going to just say something and then Kathy Svera just texted me. Um, you could certainly put this forward without figuring out the number and leave that to the Charter Review Committee to negotiate and talk about during their public meeting process. Um, if you.
So can we just put percentage of, does?
If you wanna submit it looking at a percent, I don't know.
Or just ask them to consider.
Or just ask them to consider changing it.
Have a discussion about all members.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Because anything that's compiled is gonna need, once they go through the process, town council's gonna have to get involved anyways.
Right, right, right.
To make sure these changes are legal.
Okay.
Um.
And that's not a.
But they did want us to be specific on the, at least in general, right, so, but I think I I would be more comfortable with them having that discussion among the people on the commission as well as, you know, whatever public comment they get.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm curious if there, you know, what the examples are of of citizens petitions for.
You're right, different towns.
Mm-hmm.
Um, ballot questions. You know, I mean, whether it's somehow two hundred bar until there haven't been any, or, I don't know, if there've been any.
Alright, um, so going into section three point one, we talked about taking out the compensation for services, which, I don't think, unless.
I'm not giving up my two bucks.
Wait, you get two bucks?
Yeah, I'm like.
You get two dollars, I get nothing.
Um, okay, and then we talked about for the Board of Ass- uh, the Board of Assessors, we talked about making it an appointed um, board instead of an elected board.
I think that's one of the most significant things that this board will suggest, that nobody else will be thinking about, mostly cause Denise thought of it, but I think it totally makes sense.
Yes, it wasn't me, it was, it was our principal assessor.
Well, good for us, right, you know, but it, but it, this is the perfect time to do that, I think that makes.
No, absolutely.
Given that we can never get enough people.
Alright, so that's that one, uh, we talked about adding the, cleaning up this mess here.
The long list.
The long list of things and taking out the things and cleaning up the things. Sorry, there's a lot, I mean, I don't, what, if we're not the fence viewers or the field drivers, then who who's doing that job, Denise?
Why did we take out Concom and? So who appoints the Concom? Because it's, the last line is what encompasses all those. Oh.
Yeah, it says.
Now, I had that same question the first time we met.
It says, it just basically cleans it up to say all boards committees or commissions who are not elected, yeah.
Totally, so we don't have to list everything. Exactly, makes total sense, yeah.
That way, if other committees or things come in later, then we don't have to change the charter in order to do that.
Right.
Um, okay.
Do I clarify something, or ask clarification question? That section, is it, is it our proposal that they specify who is appointed by the moderator, who is elected, and then everybody else is appointed by the, um, select board? Is that what we're proposing?
No, cause uh, most of the employees are appointed by me as the town administrator.
So it would also add who you appoint, um, I'm thinking we're also adding that the chiefs, the police and fire chief could appoint their temporary employees, and then, so it would specify all the appointments that anybody but the select board would do, and then just have a end-all paragraph that says everybody else is appointed by the select board. Is that what we're proposing?
No.
Well, yes, because it already articulates who's elected, um, and then the section on the town administrator sort of talks about anyone that's not in the select board list falls under the town administrator. Um, this is more, um, sort of the police chief, fire chief, highway superintendent, town administrator, assistant town administrator, and then all boards and committees that don't have another statutory appointing authority, whether it be election or moderator.
Okay.
Alright. Um, okay, so that's that list, then we had this larger section on the master plan or the comprehensive plan. Um, we had a long discussion, uh, not a long discussion, we had a discussion about, um, sort of sort of how it reads right now, um, the select board is appointing the select board is appointing the committee for the comprehensive plan, but then that committee is, there's just, it is under the planning board, it's a little convoluted, and I think that part of why we have not had a comprehensive plan updated, um, is that we just, that this board has not sort of moved forward on a committee, and then that didn't trigger the planning board to be able to move forward on stuff, so, um, I think we had just talked about that the last time, did anyone have any questions, sorry Denise.
No, no, I would just comment, I I don't think that's entirely true, because the language says that the, and my, my reading of it is that the planning board kicks it off and tells you it's time to appoint a charter review, uh, master plan committee.
Okay.
So I think, since I've been here.
Oh, wait, so what we were talking about last week was us, sorry, I'm, yes, um, yes.
So that we we have not appointed one, cause the planning board had not been ready for us to appoint one.
Got it.
Um, and even though it says the Board of Selectmen shall appoint seven members, quite frankly, it's a member of the planning board, the select board, Board of Health, Conservation and Finance Committee, you know.
We're doing two.
You may, right, so it's, then it comes down to the two voters at large,
Mm-hmm.
because you'll, you would say to the Conservation Commission, tell us who's gonna sit on the, you know, it's not like we're gonna handpick someone from
finance and say, well, now you're gonna serve on it. Right, right.
So it's really, in my opinion, it's down to the two voters at large.
Uh-huh.
Um, I was informing the chair earlier, and perhaps, uh, we have members of the Charter Review Committee on with us this evening, we could have sort of a larger conversation, uh, as we talked about last meeting, the planning board has their own take on this section. Um, they have asked to meet with you all, they're scheduled for the December thirteenth meeting, um, with one of the topics being how to rewrite this section, um, because their feeling is very much that the planning board should be the appointing authority, not the Board of Selectmen, the select board. Um, I think that needs to be worked out a little bit, um, and what I have told, uh, our planning director is, and again, my opinion is, if they wanted to kick one off now, it is clearly this board is the appointing authority for the two voters at large, if they wanna talk about the future, you can talk about rewriting it, um, but if you, they wanna start one now, it should be this board's authority based on the language in the charter.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so some of that will be discussed, um, jointly in December to try and iron some of this out so that it's not left, um, up to our Charter Review Committee to decide whether they support the select board's opinion or the planning board's opinion on how to reword this, um, chapter.
Do we have any comments from the members that are attending tonight, were you asking that, or?
If you're ready to ask that, I.
The, of the Charter Review?
Hmm.
Uh, sure, I would love to hear other takes on this.
Um, hi, everyone, thanks very much, um, I mean, my, my hope is that the planning board and the Board of Selectmen, the select board can come to some kind of decision. We don't wanna have to, um, but we do know that, um, it is an important factor that, yes, we're talking about those two, those two seats, and we do need to, we would much prefer to have you, the two boards hash it out than for us to make some kind of recommendation, some kind of decision, so. Um, that is definitely what what we want, Kathy, do you wanna add to that?
Yeah, I would just add, um, for the board to kind of think about in this whole stew of trying to sort this out with the planning board, and we raised this with the planning board as well last week, that, um, Chapter Forty, Section Eighty-One D, which is a zoning section of the the state law, actually is quite clear that it's the responsibility of a planning board to do a master plan, that's a a statutory role that they have. Um, the other thing is that I've searched, um, and at least thus far have been unable to find a Massachusetts municipal charter that even mentions the master plan.
Wow.
So, you know, one question is whether all of this even needs to be in the master plan, um, or whether we don't just make clear that the planning board has the job of doing the master plan and that that is worked out with the Board of Selectmen in any given year that we're proposing to update the plan, so. I'm not advocating one way or the other, I just wanted to kind of put that all on the table and have you all think about it with the planning board, cause there's a lot of, um, energy being spent trying to figure this out, and I'm just not sure if it needs to be in the charter.
Cause again, the the dilemma of the charter is it's reviewed every ten years, and then it takes about two years to get it implemented. So we're talking a ten to twelve-year cycle, so the whole goal is to have it be a much broader, high-level, as we call it, the skeleton, not the gory details, cause you put gory details in there, we're stuck with it for ten to twelve years, and also all the town meeting and all of that, so high-level, basic structure, gory details, we start to say, may not, may not be the appropriate place, so. And those are the conversations we've had with the planning board, and I'm sure they will be having them with with you, but also to keep in mind, higher-level, gory details, probably not the place. So as Kathy said, one of the thoughts we're having is just how much of the the comprehensive, the, you know, master plan slash comprehensive plan should be in the charter.
Okay.
I'm happy moving it, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Alright, I don't care, yep.
Um, so I actually think that when you have a a document that does only get reviewed every ten years, it's because you don't wanna make changes to it, it's something, it's important, so to me, I look at it as like, oh, no, we we do, we documented in here, and then it's not a willy-nilly change, so. Um, I actually, I think, I like the way it's written, I am, I wasn't sure who wrote the comment as I read this, that was you? Um, you know, I think that getting, having the two boards, um, being part of this process is really important, because it is a, it's a process for the whole town, and and I think, you know, the mass, the select board getting, getting the committee, you know, its part, and getting the committee formed, um, and then I actually like the idea of having the joint presentation at the, at the far end, because it is two different kind of perspectives on it, so. Um, I think it should stay in the master plan, in the, uh, in the charter, and for that reason, that it it is a thing that doesn't get changed very often, so.
Do you wanna?
Good question.
Well, go ahead.
No, 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 you were.
No, I was being a badinsky, so you go. Go ahead.
Um, well, this is sort of, I'm wondering, I know it's a little bit more complex process, but, um, maybe we should just. maybe we should just jointly appoint the two members at large, the two boards.
Um, that's certainly one way to do it. Um, I don't know. My concern my concern with not having the select board involved in this at all and taking it out of the charter and having it be completely a planning board thing is that this to me has seemed like one of the few tasks that the two boards can work on together to make real change within the town. It's taking the strengths of the planning board and the charges of the planning board and it's taking the charges of the select board and kind of being able to meld them together. And it's like I was saying, you know, the s- the select board is looking at the macro level, the planning board is looking at the micro level and really having both boards involved in this. Um, and making sure that there is a joint kind of presentation and that and that that they are working together um is important, I think is important for a comprehensive plan. And that's the only reason that I'm sort of banging my the drum on this is that I think sure, would it be easy to take it out and just hand it completely over to the planning board and have the select board have no say in it whatsoever? Like, that is certainly a road we can go down. Um, especially if statutorily it's only, I mean, other towns are not doing this, certainly. Um, but I do think that it's a time where we sort of can work together on something and um both are aware of what each board's interests are. Um, so that's all I have to say.
Hector has his hand up.
Hector, and then Badenski, you can.
One thing I wanted to clarify, my read of the town charter is that the comprehensive plan is reviewed every five years, not ten years, the charter is reviewed every ten years, but the
Oh, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, you're right.
Right.
And I agree with you Megan that I don't want it to be a paragraph between the select board and the planning board. I'd like the fact that it's a cooperation between the two boards to work on this and bring their different perspectives to the town's plan.
And to that point Hector, while it is a five year and a ten year, the problem is if you put specific things in the charter that dictate how the comprehensive comprehensive plan is done, you're stuck with that for ten years. So you gotta be careful, yes, we can do this every five years, but if this is the controlling factor of who's on the this every five years, you're stuck with this for ten years, so that's the balance.
So is it possible to maybe in the charter say we'll have a comprehensive plan review every five years and the bylaws would define how the committee is com- is decided?
We can do whatever you folks would like to recommend.
That'd be another idea.
Right, correct. And that's what we're, that's what we want to have is the recommendations from this board of the changes they want in the C to the charter. So I'm putting a back on you.
All right.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Borg.
So I'm totally happy having the planning board, um I don't see a joint presentation unless this language is different from the charter. It just says.
No, I was proposing that at the bottom, so the top part of it is the actual language that's in the charter and then there's kind of a dash and it's as I read this.
Oh, no, because the language in the charter says the appointed committee shall present a final report to the planning board.
Right, so what I was.
So it's not a joint presentation, so what I would recommend is this, my position is that when we speak with the planning board, I'm happy to have the planning board do the appointments as long as there could still be a member of the board of selectmen, cuz we're not just out of it if if the planning board does the appointments. I don't see that this even has to be in the charter, I'm of that opinion and obviously I'm one vote. But I think it's perfectly appropriate that if the ma- you know, if it's it it the planning board and when they speak with us, we can talk about the details more, but the that the planning board if this is not in here, that the planning board just acknowledged that a member of the board is there, I mean. So anyway, that's just my opinion and it's on the table.
No, absolutely, absolutely. Um, I think that the issue with the way that we do appointments versus I don't know, I'm in my own head right now, um.
It's too, um, i- if I may, um, in a word, section seven dash seven C, it specifically says that the master plan committee, right now in the current charter, the master plan committee will consist of a member from the board of selectmen.
Well, that's my point.
So there is a member on the current board. The way it's currently set up, there would be a member of the board of selectmen.
My point is if we take this out.
On that.
If we take this out, we just have to get some kind of commitment from the planning board that there would be a board of selectmen member. If this is not in the charter, there's no language at all.
Right, right, right.
Right.
Right, so.
Right, and it could be anybody.
And it could be anybody.
Right.
So that's the point of speaking with the, I understand they're gonna come, the planning board, we're gonna have a meeting with the planning board. So these are the things, I'm happy if if a future committee is not in the charter but includes someone from the board of select, select board.
Mm-hmm.
So that's just my opinion. I mean, I think it makes sense not to have the details in the charter.
Nope, I hear you.
We don't have to keep talking about this.
No, it's okay, it's okay. Um Denise, I, yes.
Uh, I would just caution before you start giving up appointment authority. Um, as a formal committee of the town, my opinion is the select board should be the appointing authority. Uh, the planning board is not appointing anyone else, they're not appointing members of committees. I I think it's important, my my feeling is it's important to keep it as the true appointing authority, which is the select board. Um, how the committee shapes out, who's on it, um, you know, that can be a larger discussion, but I would just caution before you give that authority up.
Yeah. Just wanna say it's kind of, I I agree with Ellen's comment about things, things that things being in the charter uh not being something that we can tinker with on a regular basis is is sometimes a good thing. I'm I'm, I really feel like that's what this document is for, is to have that larger structure and that um there can be, you know, I mean, I'm I'm open to seeing a way that it's written, that there is a mechanism if somebody has a burning desire to change it before the charter is reviewed.
Mm-hmm.
That there's, but I I feel that our being the appointment authority, I I think it's less complicated if you don't have
Multiple.
exceptions to to rules.
Right.
Um. Yeah.
Um. No, I agree and I I do think that, you know, obviously there's, there are reasons that we change the charter and that we review the charter and things change in our society and our town and all the things. So I think that, you know, anything that we are putting forth now has not only us thinking maybe ten years in the future, but also is coming at it with the historical perspective of why we would want a certain thing in um in the charter, so. Um, okay.
One more.
Yeah, no, absolutely, and then I feel like I'm not sure, this is the last one, I think. Of the.
I just, I also have this this feeling just um that that in the past, this I, my experience was I didn't feel as though the select board was I don't know how to say this, I mean, I don't, um. I I think that we're moving toward being more collaborative with other boards and committees. And if, when that's not the case, then there could be more of a power struggle. But if we um are in the framework of of working together, then it then it becomes a discussion of how can we work this out so that everybody's um ideas can be served. And I think trying to behave as though it might be adversarial may promote that, whereas if we realize that things are only gonna work if we're collaborative, then we have to be collaborative. And right now, that's really important to to speak up for that because there's plenty of adversarial behavior out there. And so I think that's another reason to to, we can't put that in the charter, but.
So I I think what you're hearing from us charter review is that we definitely we definitely want to replace all the references of selectmen with the select board. We want to replace master, any uses of the word master plan with comprehensive plan. We can certainly send you this, I'm reading it off of our um document that's in our um packet as well, so. Um, we wanna talk, in article two, there was questions about um the actual number of votes. Um, so I do think that our, what I'm hearing from the board is that, not that we wanna pick a certain number, but that's, it's an area that we would like the charter review committee to review. Obviously with town council because there are some numerical values and stuff that I think um. We we, what we're talking about is maybe um aligning it more towards um towards a percentage of voters, but certainly uh because I'm not versed in this section of the law um that seems to potentially be a legal question. Um, section three, the general provisions, we wanna take out compensation. Elected town, not, I wanna take out compensation completely. Um, no, elected town officers shall receive no compensation for their services. Um, we would like to suggest that the board of assessors become an appointed board, not an elected board. There's a whole section um about who the select board shall appoint, um and it's just sort of a cleaned up section. Um, and then the whole bit about the um comprehensive plan committee um that I think you'll get some clarity on where we land once we've had the discussion with the um planning board. Does that all sound good, Ms. Woods?
So to.
Yep.
So to make sure I understand.
Yep.
Um, section two dash eleven, which is the um it it right now it says two hundred voters, you do not wanna put a number. You want the charter review committee to either determine what is there is fine or make the determination, so the select board does not, doesn't have a, doesn't have a a position on that, on that section, correct?
I'm not hearing that anybody has a specific number. I think it's just something we want you all to look at and whether you look at that from other towns and how uh I think the comment was that it seemed like it was a high bar to meet, so maybe it just maybe you sort of look at what other towns
Okay.
maybe do, um.
Or 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 the percentage.
Or the percentage.
If that makes more sense.
Yeah.
Or should it be a high bar?
Or should it be a high bar to meet? You know, I just, there was a question about it. Um, I think, hold up, Linda has her hand raised, so as the town clerk.
All right, sorry about that. Here's something going on. Um, as the person who would have to certify those sections of sig- signatures, I would like to recommend that you have a set number.
Got it.
Not, not a percentage, okay.
And and I think pretty, in in most cases, it, there is a set number. Um, usually under master and a law, we do have um it will say a hundred or two hundred or whatever, it doesn't give a percentage.
It doesn't.
Because that percentage on this, I'll tell you right now, the number of voters we have, roughly fifty-four percent, I mean, fifty-four hundred residents is seventy-two hundred roughly. But that number keeps changing on a regular basis, it's just a snapshot of what is on that particular day, the number of registered voters, whether, cuz we have a number of people who have moved out of town. I have over three hundred inactive people. Um, so I would highly recommend keeping a set number, not a percentage.
Okay.
Um, so that's section two. Um, section three dash eight, again, wanna make sure I understand. And I also wanna make sure that the board understands, under the board of assessors, there's two changes that are in there.
Mm-hmm.
One is to, one is to have it be appointed versus elected, but it's also saying specifically putting the principal assessor as one of those members of the board.
Mm-hmm.
That is currently, it is different, that causes some other interesting scenarios that if you have a board of three and the principal assessor is on the board, she can't talk to her board because it's a quorum. So there's issues in that, but again, I just wanted everybody to make sure that it was not just changing it from elected to appointed, but also putting the principal assessor on that board. Not, you know, and that's different than planning board, different than CONCOM. So again, just wanna make sure the select board, before they say this is what we're going to do, that you understand that.
Can you, can you explain that again?
So right now, you have the the, my understanding of the proposed word change.
Yeah.
You can help me here Kathy, is is two changes. Well, currently, board of assessors, three, there is the principal assessor and a board of three that are elected. So that principal assessor can talk with that board, doesn't matter, because she's not, Kristen, she is not part of the board. This change says it now becomes a three-person board, the chief assessor, the principal assessor, and quorum is two. Principal assessor cannot talk to either of the two other board members or it becomes a quorum. And it violates open meeting law.
But is she a staff member, does that?
She, I mean, if she's a board member, I don't know why there would be conversations with board members outside of a meeting, but um.
It doesn't, it, there can be, I mean, information passing back and forth, this just precludes any conversations from happening.
Yep.
So, you know, and again, it, I'm not saying it's right or wrong. I'm just saying it introduces an issue that currently doesn't exist. And it might be the right thing. Again, I'm not, I'm not here to say yay or nay. I'm just here to make sure before the board is, the select board says, this is what we want, you understand that there are two things and there are some challenges to one of them, that's all.
Okay.
Um, understand the list and I think um for the um charter review, charter review committee's article seven, that we will just state that um we're holding off on any changes to that until the select board and the planning board meet. And I would encourage you on the thirteenth, both boards, to come to some kind of decision and some kind of joint recommendation so that our very difficult job just becomes a little bit easier, that we know in terms of the master plan, comprehensive plan, the board of selectmen and the planning board are in sync.
Okay. Yep.
Can I go interrupt here and go back to the board of assessors?
Yeah.
How is the principal assessor selected now?
She's hired.
Yeah, she's a staff person.
I see.
She's a staff person.
I didn't think we were suggesting to get rid of that staff position. I thought we were just suggesting that the elected board of assessors become a board.
Correct. But it was. Correct, but this, but this change says that staff person becomes a board member. So it would be very similar to Kathy on conservation commission. She's a town employee, but she is not on the conservation commission board.
Right.
There now, this change is.
And I thought that the principal of, I thought what we were saying is the principal assessor remain an employee.
Mm-hmm, correct.
It's just that these three elected board of assessors become appointed.
It's both, there's both.
It's two, it's two pieces to it.
One would make Kristen or the any principal assessor a member of the board.
Right, and that's not the way it currently is. So again, this pro- this proposed change, there's two changes. The easy one is taking it from regardless of the number, changing the board of assessors from elected to appointed. Great, okay. But this is now also saying, instead of, instead of a principal assessor and a board of three, it's now two appointed committee, uh two appointed assessors and this principal assessor is part of the committee. So you now have a board, you have a committee of three, two appointed, one hired by the town.
I guess I'm confused as to how would we're proposing, well, first, let me ask my fellow board members, are you understanding it the way I thought we were saying, that we want, still wanted four people, a principal assessor and three board of assessors or my?
It doesn't read that way. It doesn't read that way.
So if I can, cuz we discussed this at the last meeting.
Change.
So no, one of the challenges that we've had um here is number one, with it being elected, we're having trouble filling those vacancies. Um the second issue is if you make it appointed, that's great. Um the Board of Assessors is the only board statutorily that is required to be certified. They have to take a class, they have to be certified in order to sign off on things like the tax recap, uh the tax rate, the tax classification. Um the challenge has been that um we have struggled to keep a fully certified board. You need two out of the three and able, able to sign documents. So we are lucky enough right now that of our board of three, we have two that are certified. If one of those were to leave, we would be down to one, we would not get a tax rate set, we would not get our um value set. So there are a number of towns in the Commonwealth that have gone to making the principal assessor one of the seats because they are, you always then have a certified board member. And then you only need one additional certified board member in order to conduct the business of the town. Because it is a requirement for the classes, if we were to lose one of our two certified members now a week before the tax classification hearing, we could not certify our tax rate next week. And you can't just appoint somebody today to fill in because they have to go through a class and be certified. And that's what the challenge has been with the Board of Assessor in a number of towns. I actually have a list of towns that have appointed boards versus elected boards. And what we're also finding is some towns have done away with the boards altogether. Boxford does not have a Board of Assessors because of the difficulties over there. They just have their principal assessor, signs off on the documents on behalf of the assessing office. So there are diff, there are a couple different thought processes. The one I was putting forward was to have the principal assessor serve in one of those roles, so we always have at least one certified member. Then the challenge is just we need a second one.
Could could, could we have, I mean, because I, I understand Deb, Deb's comment now, and it makes some sense that can we have three appointed members?
Well, you need an odd number.
You need an odd number.
So we could, I mean, we could certainly increase to five, but then the challenge is finding people to be certified.
We're not getting them anymore.
Right, right, right.
Maybe if there's more openings, more people will uh
Yeah, nice try.
I mean, I would say the, the benefit to us is we have a three-person assessing office. That if our principal assessor was a member, the assistant assessor would be the one communicating with board members if they need them to come in and do signatures, if they need something from them. It couldn't be the principal assessor, but one of the other two staff members could reach out. Um you know, that would be the way around it. I quite, quite candidly, I'm not sold on it either way. I just think it needs to be better than where we are.
Yeah.
And struggling to fill the most vital board
Right.
in order to get our tax rate certified, so.
Right, right.
Um again, we're lucky enough right now that two out of the three, but our third member has not been to a board meeting since he was elected, not once.
Yeah.
Um and there's no, there's no removal, there's no process because they're elected.
And that's, seems like that's been like
Right, right, right.
Um and those are the challenges that we're trying to avoid by going to an appointed versus an elected.
Right.
Right, and again, we're not, you know, Kathy and I aren't here to say we want it one way or another. I just wanted to be sure that the board understood that there were two component, two different changes in that, in that line item. Because I don't want the board to say, this is what we recommend, this is what we want the Charter Review Committee to move ahead with, unless you understood.
Yep.
So that was, that's the only reason for the comment.
Yeah, it'd be useful.
And have we had any input from the current Board of Assessors on these proposed changes?
So my understanding is they're meeting tomorrow night. Um but no, quite frankly, I did not get there because this was my recommendation. This is not my recommendation in collaboration with the board that we struggled with. So I know they're meeting and they'll, I'm sure, make their own recommendation and their own comments on it. But no, this was my recommendation that we discussed at the last meeting that the board supported.
I have a small housekeeping comment. Could you please, when you decide how this is gonna go, could you make sure that um so the last sentence of that section, um with the last part says, for terms of three years each, so arrange that the term of one member shall expire each year. Well, if you only have two appointed members that are expiring, that doesn't work.
Right, right.
Oh, right.
So yeah, there's a, there's a variety of, of um
Just so they don't expire at the same time, is what you want to say.
Terms is that. Right. Right. So and then the, the last part again, I'm gonna, you know, um report back to our committee tomorrow, the Charter Review Committee, that the whole master, um master plan, we're gonna wait until the select board and the planning board meet on the thirteenth of December, is that what I heard?
Yes.
And that with, I highly encourage both boards to please, please, please come up with something. So, so with that, um I guess, Madam Chair, I'd like to understand where the board stands on this document.
Um So I
There were a couple of other items I wanted to discuss, sorry to interrupt, go ahead.
That are not on this list Hector?
From his
Yeah, there was a, quite a bit of discussion at the last meeting, I watched the recording twice. Um and there was quite a bit of discussion on something that I found annoying in the Charter is the specification of how things are, how notices are sent out, bulletin boards and stuff like that, which I would encourage, I think we should encourage the Charter Review Committee to make those more open to whatever technology is available at the time, rather than specifying newspapers and bulletin boards. Though I know that the um town clerk gets to decide what a bulletin board is, it just seems a little too specific. And I, it could be worthwhile for our Charter to come up to speed with the technology.
That is on our plate.
Okay.
Perfect.
And the other item that I had was um I believe it was in board that mentioned having a definition section because, for example, the whole comment about multi-member boards that are mentioned in the Charter, those are definitely confusing. Many times the multi-member boards are referenced as if they're all appointed and doesn't make mention of the fact that the select board is a multi-member board and it's all elected. So if there could be a definition section in a review of how those definitions are used within the Charter.
Okay.
Well, and I think if I may ask Debbie, um I know when I met with the Charter Review Committee, we looked at that section seven dash eight, procedures governing multiple member bodies, um and actually talked about just striking it altogether because uh the majority of that does not comply with open meeting law, and quite frankly, we don't need to list in a charter when you need to post your meeting notices because that's statutory, so um
Right.
we may look to look, you know, that, that may be up for discussion anyways to sort of remove that whole section.
I have a big note that says revisit.
Yeah.
And removing that section may be great, the only thing I keep thinking about is the whole conversation that happened about disciplinary, disciplinary action for officials that abuse their position, especially uh against town employees. What a multi-member board is and what um disciplinary actions can be taken against a member of a multi-member board really changes on whether they're an elected official or a appointed official. So if taking it out is, is the best way to do it, that's fine, as long as the information remains the same in the Charter when it does talk about disciplinary pathways.
I, I would suggest though also disciplinary action should not be in a charter.
No.
Definitely the employee stuff would not be in the Charter, that falls under the personnel bylaw. And I think any disciplinary action against appointed boards, in my opinion, should be a policy by the appointing authority, which would be the select board, and not listed in a Charter. That would be my opinion.
So you're proposing we get rid of the uh opening about um recall elections and things like that?
Well, not the recall, because that's the only recourse on elected officials. Uh but when it comes to appointed officials and actual disciplinary action, again, most of that falls under the open meeting law, they're required to get forty-eight hours notice, there's a statutory requirement of what can be sent to them, um so a lot of that is just statutory. That would be separate from the recall, that would be the only recourse you have if it's an elected official and someone wants to have them removed from office.
Is that in here?
Yes, the recall stuff is in.
The recall for the elected, but is it also in there for the appointing?
Well, it's that five dash four, removals and suspensions, it's sort of
Yeah.
Oh, and that does, that includes appointed.
It talks about employees, it talks about appointed boards.
Yeah.
Um and this doesn't really follow, I mean, in a general sense, it follows like employee disciplinary action, but that doesn't belong in a charter.
Right.
No, I think it's that whole skeleton versus gory details, and it needs to really be more higher level.
Yeah.
Um alright, so one thing that we need to do is just take a vote on this before we move it forward to the Charter Review Committee, so I wanna um I'm gonna take a motion for it if anyone has any additional comments. We can certainly talk about it in a minute, but.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the following list of proposed changes to the Stowe Town Charter as finalized at this meeting and forward this to the Charter Review Committee.
I'll second, but I think it has to be revised.
Okay.
List.
Or the motion. You okay with the motion?
Either or both.
Okay.
Okay, well, I think the only change we made from what was written, I mean, unless we're adding I don't think we all agree, I mean, there's still things we can all individually submit, but the only thing we're changing from what we wrote, I mean, we're gonna hold off on the master plan section until we meet.
That's the part I talked about.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
And then the numbers thing that we're, we're asking the Charter Committee to look at the number of votes.
Yeah, right. Yeah.
Right, so I think
But you're hearing what we're proposing in this meeting, so this motion is okay?
Yes, so I have for section two dash seven A, um that you're looking to um have them discuss increasing the number of voters. I think that that process was the, the number was too low. And then with section two dash eleven B, you're looking to lower the number of votes needed. Um or to have the Charter Review Committee discuss that. Um so those would be the two changes, um in addition to holding on seven dash seven C.
Holding. Yep.
And if you, or whatever you vote this evening, um Kathy and Debbie, I will upload to your form um tomorrow so that you have it in the language that I have, that they've been looking at.
Thank you. And before you do just make your motion, um any changes that an individual board member wants to make, those forms are due to us by Friday, please.
Okay.
And then we're going to, with the exception of the meeting with the, the select board and the planning board, we are going to kind of um not close shop on input, but close shop on input.
Fantastic.
Can I just ask one quick question?
Yeah.
I mean, I, I, I agree with Hector that having definitions in a, in a legal document can be useful, so I'm just curious if, if other people feel that it, you know, it's too lengthy or it cumbersome in some way, or, or weren't enough things that need to be defined here, or
Is that a general question or?
Because my thought was that the ones that we raised are the particular terms that are unclear. I don't know that there's other terms as much that are unclear, I would like to have clarity on those.
We don't have to Don't have to define the English language, but just to find
Right, right.
The problematic ones.
Yeah.
There are some definitions in section seven point five, so I think the request would be if there are additional terms that need to be defined, just let us know.
Well, that's right.
Mm-hmm.
Definitions.
Yeah, also I had a question about, was there any other thought about what I said as far as what forms of communication are used? Is that something that we would want broadened in the Charter or?
It, it sounds like it's something that, well, and certainly I'm not speaking for the entire board. It sounds like it's something that's already on the Charter Review Committee's radar. So I don't know that it needs to be coming from our board. I think what we're giving them are things that, again, we want to hang our hat on, so
Okay.
it's not something personally that I feel like the select board needs to do, but I certainly will, I'm willing to be overruled.
Well, it sounds like it doesn't need to, I mean, that generally is because it's in violation of open meeting law anyway, so the whole, most of the section's gonna change.
Right, section seven dash eight, and a few other places, um I know one of the, oh, I was gonna say, I submitted one anyways just for filling a vacancies because we are not posting um employment vacancies on a bulletin board anymore. Those are on our website, um or in newspapers or circulations of some sort, um.
Oh, no, also Denise, according to the Charter, if I read it correctly, you have to submit the budget to the local paper every year.
Yes, I submitted us a revision to that section as well to strike that, um and that, you know, we will certainly um do our best to distribute it, obviously the warrant gets sent out with the newspaper. Uh my concern is, you know, if something should happen to the Stowe Independent, it could cost us thousands upon thousands of dollars to put that in a paper that would still cover circulation of Stowe. Um so I don't want to be tied to that, so I have submitted that as a, uh one of my changes. Again, it doesn't mean we won't do it, it just removes the requirement that we have to.
Okay.
So, um I have done a few of that through my changes.
I did too, through my personal changes, but I can see if, if the, this isn't something that the board feels needs to be pushed, that's fine.
Engle, I just have one comment on Denise's revision to the motion, where we talk about the two hundred voters. The way you just worded it was that we think it's too high. I don't, I personally just don't know if it's high or low, so just, I think, in my opinion, the message should be check it, to, you know, maybe it's supposed to be high.
Okay, right. Yep.
You know, I, I just don't know enough, so maybe that's something we ask the Charter Review. So instead of just saying lower, but just
So you'd like to just to review the number of voters needed?
To re, yeah, I think that's, yeah.
You know, because if it's supposed to be high, then it should be high, I don't, I don't know.
Right, mm-hmm. Yeah.
Usually, I thought supposed to be high just so that it's not easy for every
It's not too easy.
some big area to submit changes and just get a bunch of friends, and all of a sudden you got changes coming out like crazy.
Right, because it does trigger a special election, so you don't want it to be, you know, ten, because we'd have special elections all the time.
Yeah. Right.
Right.
But I will just change that to review the number of votes uh needed.
Perfect.
And now, do you want me to do the same with two dash seven? Um that one, I think the board felt it was too low and you were looking to increase that, or do you want me to just leave that um as a, because that is um ten. Any ten or more voters for an annual town meeting to have a warrant article included.
I'm happy to have the Charter Review Committee
Yeah.
do it, I think maybe our message there is, it's too low, that's our message there.
Yeah, I don't want to get tied to a number. Yes. Yes.
And not set the number for them.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
But you would, you would be in favor of increasing that to some number?
Yes.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, that's how I have that.
Thank you.
Not a percentage.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think we've been, we've been advised on that.
Fine, no percentages.
No percentages.
No percentages.
It's sound advice.
It is, okay. Alright, do you want me to, um, you want to remove it?
Do that?
Or?
No, I think, well
The motion should be fine.
The motion should be fine because it's the following list, so as long as the list, which the only changes that I have made, again,
We just had this section.
Section two dash seven A now says review to potentially increase the number of votes for an annual town meeting warrant article. Um and section two dash eleven B, review the number of votes needed.
Mm-hmm.
Um and then I have a hold on seven dash seven, which is the master plan.
Yep. Yep. Okay.
Okay.
And so you have a motion in a second.
You have a second, okay, then uh any further discussion? No, seeing none, uh all in favor Hector?
Aye.
Engel, Courtney?
Aye.
Alan? And Chair votes aye, so that is unanimous, thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright. Don't worry. No. Um alright, so I, I loved that um Debbie talked about skeletons and gory details because I think one of the things that has been happening in our discussions about the EDIC is that we have gotten way, way in the weeds.
Exactly.
Um and I think it's because we want to help them to be able to do the things that we've hoped that they would be able to do, but by putting it in a mission statement, then they're really tied to that, so I think um I think I like what Lori has, starting with as an advisory committee. I think the part about the rural character I think addresses some questions, however, I don't always love that wording because I think that that is a little
Code.
NIMBY wording sometimes, um so I don't love that it, so I, I want to make sure that uh not saying that the, that, I'm saying rural character, to me, sometimes screams NIMBY. Not that what Lori put in there was, to be clear. Um but I think um Um but I think um I think that sentiment is one that um, you know, you wanna keep it so that it's an opening and welcoming place, but also understanding that, you know, we do have we do have size issues, we are, we are still a small town.
We're still a small town.
We can welcome everyone, but we we also are, you know, limited by acreage.
So are you looking to?
So what I'm looking to.
Change those words?
I I don't know, I wanted to sort of just bring.
I mean, you could just say maintain residents' desire to support its local farms and open space. That's what rural character is all about.
Yep. Um. I'm sorry, my agenda keeps closing, um my packet keeps closing, this is not helpful. Um, okay, so I think, how does everyone feel about the way that it's worded?
I think you raise a good point about a NIMBY piece.
Cuz I do, I do want businesses to feel like they can come into town, I do, I do want that.
And I feel like we're, we fall back, I mean, I don't actually think that many people use the term maintain Stowe's rural character unless they have some agenda and it, most people say, what does that mean exactly? Cuz we're not rural anymore.
Right. No.
We are a right to, as somebody said.
One seventeen running right through the countdown.
We're a right to farm community and we we support, you know, that is our biggest business, really, is our agricultural.
Right, right. Right. Right.
Businesses.
So maybe it's agriculture, I mean, maybe that's that's what it is and maybe rural is not, is not the word.
Yeah, I just.
Um.
But you know, in a, in a statement about our our economic development, is that, are we saying we want more farms?
No, and so I do hear that too, right? So even, alright, the EDIC shall work with store board, Stowe boards and commissions, Stowe businesses and residents to better understand and balance community needs. It needs to be something about Stowe's character, history and moving forward in the twenty-first century. Like that's, that's really.
Maybe like Stowe's small town character?
Yeah, I don't think that that's ter, I mean, I think that
That basically.
that works because I don't think that's.
Some of it, it high rises.
Right, but I think, yes, I think small town says we are a small town, this is like getting to nine o'clock at night and I feel like I'm delirious.
I agree.
I'm sorry, but this is something I would love to be able to put to bed. Um so, um I think residents' desire to maintain Stowe's small town feel or character um and business development within the town, um.
I can live with that.
Yeah.
I would be happy with that. How about you?
Yeah.
How about you?
Yeah.
Great, that's literally the only change that I think I want made to that. Um I think we can send it, I will, when I'm asking of you Denise. Um if you, as you're typing it, can just send me a chunk paragraph of what we've decided is what we'd like to put forward as a mission statement, full stop, this is what the Select Board agrees on, I will send to Lori and Tom. Then we can either have a quick meeting and then decide how we're going to push it forward into the world. Birth the baby of the EDIC.
Right, so I would say after you meet with Tom and Lori, you'd still have to come back to this board
Yeah.
to either say, we've made no changes or these are the changes and then, so I think you still have to
If they have a, right, 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 right.
as they would codify what the
I have one more meeting, yes, yeah.
final version looks like.
Yep.
Um and the only thing I would say is um, you know, Stowe's small town character, um just don't forget, we have a very large population in town that want more restaurants and want more local business coming into town. So um I don't want to um steer away by saying small town character when we have people that want business in this town. Again, small business fitting for a smaller town, but people want stuff.
Right, and I think that's what we're, I think that's what we're saying. I think it's, we don't want a, you know, we don't want a big box store in the mid, middle of.
So what if we say, to what Ingleborg was just sort of whispering, um the residents' desire to balance Smo- Stowe's small town character with business development?
I love that.
There you go.
Courtney, what were you gonna say?
Yeah, I was just gonna take out the highlighted phrase, so basically, pretty much the same.
You're saying.
Yeah. 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 What do you think Hector? Can you live with that? Yep. Okay, so I will, um if you just shoot me an email with this, I will, when I get home, send Tom and Lori an email, let them know that this is what we decided, um see what their boards, if they agree with it. If we get verbal confirmation on that, then we can um
We're gonna have it finalized.
advertise, fi- finalize it and.
And then post.
Post it and do all the things. Okay. Uh yes?
No, I'm just reading it now and now the word balance is in there twice.
I know, I was thinking that, but I was just gonna keep my mouth shut.
Oh, hold on.
To better understand and balance com, so maybe.
No, you just, you don't have to say balance, say balance community needs, comma.
With regards to Stowe's small town character. Better understand and balance community needs and then you wanna take out the residents' desire to?
Yes. Yes.
Yeah.
So we're getting rid of small town character?
And business. So you've got community needs and you've got business.
Well, no, it's community needs. What's the word you're saying? I'm just blanking right now.
Well, we had s- small town character.
No.
But I was taking that out to say balance small town character with business development.
Just lost it.
So maybe we get rid of um the EDIC shall work with the Stowe boards and commissions, Stowe businesses and residents.
To better understand community needs, take out that and balance.
Take out and balance.
Or to better.
And then put in the balance.
Or to balance Stowe's small town character with business development within the town
Exactly, they're in community needs.
and get rid of the balance community needs, cuz it's in there a second time.
Yeah, yes. There you go, very good. Who said you can't wordsmith it?
Alright, to better understand, alright.
Okay, so we don't need a vote on this yet.
Oh.
So the EDIC shall work with Stowe boards and commissions, Stowe businesses and residents to balance Stowe's small town character with business development within the town?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so that is what is the middle of that paragraph.
Great, great.
And I will send it to you to share.
And I will share it and then we will. Okay, so we're gonna, do we need a motion cuz we're not finalizing this right now?
Yeah.
One last thing, okay.
One last thing.
Now we gotta sign some stuff.
Now we gotta sign some stuff, so tell us all about it Denise.
Uh so all this is, um we have been working with the um with Stowe Acres on the finalizing the um closing um and they have asked if they could extend it to early January. We were looking to close by December thirty first, for tax purposes, they'd like to make it the beginning of January instead. This is just a, you know, half paragraph document that just gives the authority to extend it two weeks.
Great.
So um I think it'll be great, we're all set to go, I see no um obstacles to stop us from proceeding with that closing, so it's very exciting.
Okay. Excellent, and we don't have to do a motion or anything because.
Yeah.
Yes, you do.
Yeah, we have to vote to approve the change. Oh, it wasn't in here.
Oh, was it not on there?
No.
Sorry.
Courtney can do that.
Oh, you're can. Courtney ready?
Courtney has to be creative at nine o'clock at night.
Uh I I move that we um
Sign.
approve the the document extending the uh date for the purchase and sale sale with Stowe Acres.
Second.
Uh all in.
Do you want to say until January thirteenth, twenty twenty-three?
Seventh, seventh.
Uh we're doing the thirteenth just to be safe, just in case something happens.
Sorry, you were right.
Okay.
Sorry, I was.
Alright, um all in favor, Hector? Ingleborg? Courtney? Alan? Megan? Chair votes aye.
Chair.
Um alright, uh so that's unanimous, fantastic.
I thought the meeting minutes were perfecto.
Yep, she did uh another
I'm waiting to do it again.
Great job. Um alright.
Move to.
Can anybody remind me, am I supposed to abstain because I wasn't here voting on the meeting minutes?
You you can vote on them if you choose, but you don't have to.
You don't have to.
Since we have a majority in the room, you don't have to worry about it.
Oh, okay.
But you, but you've watched the meeting.
I was, I was.
But you watched the recording, so yeah.
You might have, you might have paid more attention than we did, seriously.
Yeah.
Okay.
Alrighty.
I move to accept the meeting minutes of the October twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two meeting as drafted.
Second. No further comments, um all in favor, Hector?
Aye.
Ingleborg?
Aye.
Courtney?
Aye.
Alan?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye, that's unanimous.
Yay.
Uh correspondence, any questions, comments?
Um I was just, I mean, the gentleman's here earlier talking about the Lake Budam, so that sort of got answered.
Yeah. Yeah.
It would be helpful, I mean, maybe we can just print it in the paper that there, the reason there's no timeline yet, because it's too soon. I I I feel like we didn't quite give him the answer he needed to to relax.
Is it time to state?
Well, the email came in because they've started a little thing around, they were instructed, I got the same email from seven different people, it was the exact same wording.
So they're all.
Only one sent it to the Select Board.
Okay.
Um so yes, it is, um we have met with um the two ends of the dam privately because their property is on the dam.
Yeah.
Um actually, one of them owns a portion of the dam, so we've had some conversations. Um but in my opinion, we're not ready to have a public, uh
Yeah.
quite, quite candidly, some members of the area think that they should be weighing in on what's in our RFP, what material is being used and quite frankly, we're hiring professional engineers working with the Office of Dam Safety, we are doing what needs to be done.
Right, yeah.
In my opinion, it's when we have a final design is what's going forward. We can't be micromanaging the process with a bunch of different opinions when it is a critical issue for us and a huge safety concern.
Right.
Um and so that's why we have not been having public meetings because we're not at the point to have public meetings.
Got it.
Uh.
And Steve's leaving and that adds to the additional complication, I guess.
Also.
Yes.
We'll have public meetings during the permitting process too.
Yes, I mean.
Yes, but they're afraid that if it's at a conservation commission meeting, they can't weigh in on the specifics of the material and things and they, that's what they wanna weigh in on. They don't like some of the design elements that are being proposed by the engineers and supported by the Office of Dam Safety.
I see, okay.
But we just want it not to fail.
Right.
Is it, is it a MIPA review process?
Well, they have to live next to it.
Cause then they're like.
Well, I I get that, I do, I do.
You don't think it's MIPA, but Army Corps of Engineers, Office of Dam Safety, um
So it doesn't.
Do you know what I mean, like? Mass dog is involved, I mean, there's a number of agencies involved.
They already pretty much.
And that's what we said, it's not just us putting forward a plan, it's, there is a full review process
But no, I do, I do agree with you.
Right.
and we don't wanna say yes to something and then have Army Corps say, you're not doing that and then have to go back. Um so we will absolutely involve the public, but I I, it's just still premature to do so.
Yeah.
Okay, great. And then my other question, um the very brief email from uh the library about whether we need to create a fund.
The library already has a fund.
That's what I was wondering, I mean, it there seems, it's getting confusing that there's multiple funds
Yeah, it's I.
and even someone asked me like, wait a minute, who's doing what fundraising and, yeah. I I would love to say that to Tina publicly, but you know, I don't want them to lose funding because people are too confused, like who's asking for money?
Well, and believe me, it is not Tina.
No, I know, I I know.
So I am, I have an email drafted to the Chair of the Library Trustees because there's been a lot of things demanded and um criticisms ushered on certain topics and I, we just, it it needs to stop. They already have a donation account, a gift account, you've accepted gifts into that account. Um we cannot have a second account for the same purpose from the same board with the same authority.
Seems silly.
So.
We're done. Got it, great, thank you, that's, that's pretty much what I wanted, I want, what I figured to get that issue.
Do they need to get alignment?
Little bit.
What'd you say, they need to get what?
Alignment.
Alignment within their organization, yes.
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 Alright, well, on that note, I'll take a final motion.
Madam Chair, I move to adjourn.
Alright, Hector?
We need a second.
Oh, sorry, I'm sorry. Well, I guess I live here now.
She is tired, yeah.
Alright, Hector?
Yep.
Ingleborg?
Aye.
Courtney?
Aye.
Alan?
Aye. Did you say nay? She said nay.
She did say nay, how dare you, Courtney would like to move there.
I I knew it was a.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Well.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, everyone.
See you next week.
Yes, next week.
Please be here Hector, so I don't have to call everyone's name.